At 7:00 PM, I am calling to order. The Norton Select Board meeting for Thursday, May 25th, 2023. And all five members of the Norton Select Board are present. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Hey Shane, is there any way there's a volume on that that like we're getting?
The controller.
So is it just this one?
All right. Perfect, thank you. Going we good? All right, so the first item on the agenda is we received a request from Vera Jordan to be appointed as an alternate for the Council on Aging. I don't see Vera here, but does anybody have any questions or concerns about appointing Vera to the Department of Aging as an alternate? I'll take a motion.
A motion to appoint Vera Jordan as an alternate to the council.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Congratulations to Vera. Next up, we have, on the agenda, we have the appointment for the Norton Town Constable. I'd like to put this off to our, to our next meeting without objection from anybody on the board. Just want to collect some more information. I know some folks had questions about the constable position as well, so, so we can push this off to the next meeting and take care of that, okay? All right. Next up is appointment of Mary Steele to the Economic Development Commission. I think we, we all know Mary, so if we don't have any questions or concerns, we can go ahead and vote on that as well.
The heroine of the year.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mary Steele to the Economic Development Commission.
I'll second it.
So what's the heroine of the year?
She, it's an award that the state reps give out every year. They pick a heroine from a community.
Oh.
And I've heard that Mary got the award.
For this year?
That's great.
That's awesome.
That's great. All right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, congratulations to Mary. And then the next appointment we have was from, was a request from Bob Kimball to, to be appointed as the at-large member to the town common committee. If you'll recall, Bob was here, I think, at our last meeting. And we did approve the ninth member of the committee, I believe, but we didn't specifically say that that at-large member would be Bob himself.
I think we all thought he was on already.
So I'll take a motion to appoint Bob.
So moved.
No, I'd like to, wait, you mean a motion?
Steve motioned.
Oh, you motioned.
You can second.
I'll second.
All right. Hearing a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed? All right, so unanimous appointment of Bob Kimball to the traffic, sorry, the, there's already other traffic study, can be the town common committee. All right. Okay, next up is approval of minutes. Anybody have any questions, changes to the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes, including but not limited to May 11, 2023, and May 11, 2023 executive session.
That's second.
Hearing a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I keep forgetting to vote myself. Let's do that again, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so that's unanimous. The minutes are approved. I don't mean to be going too fast, so.
No, keep going.
Keep going. So next up, we have some permit applications. The first one is a special events parking permit for 59 parking spaces at 253 Mansfield Avenue from June 1st to September 30th.
Yep. This is signed off by the Fire Department, Police Department, and head inspections department, and he has done this previously.
It's getting scary that I'm remembering things from last year.
Oh, yeah.
And I remember that we, we did look at this last year as well.
And no issues last year either, right?
No. And this is so he can, he can rent it out during events, I think, or like concerts?
Yeah.
He can use this basis for that. All right. Any other questions, Congress?
No, only motion.
Do it.
I'll motion to approve the special events parking permit application of property owner Ruskeeter Brothers LLC for 59 parking spaces at 253 Mansfield Ave. from June 1st to September 30th.
Second.
Okay, hearing a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Mike, do you have anything on this one other than what it appears to be?
The only thing on this one, I just want to make sure that if you approve this, that you read A, B, C, D, and E, the restrictions.
Okay.
So maybe come to add on the license.
Read it into the.
Read it into the record.
All right. I think the clerk should do that. Take her away.
So this is a vote for home occupation limousine services at 44 Pine Street, Norton, Mass. After reviewing the application documents submitted for the office in relation to the limousine transportation business located at 44 Pine Street, it is my opinion that the proposed business is allowed under Norton Zoning Bylaw 175-4.4 as long as the following conditions are met. A, the service is limited to only one vehicle. B, there be no visible exterior storage or display of products, materials, or equipment. C, there is no servicing of the vehicle on the property. D, the customer pickup and drop-off is conducted off the premises. E, there are no employees other than the resident. And that's a letter from Nick Iafredi, Building Commissioner at Zoning Enforcement Office.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application of Secar LLC for a home occupation limousine license.
I'll second.
With the conditions.
With the conditions, sorry, with the conditions stated.
I'll second with the conditions.
Okay. Hearing a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, it's unanimous. All right. Moving on to announcements.
Yep.
Mr. Clerk.
Okay, so announcements, we have Norton Veterans Council carnival June 15th, 16th, 17th, and 18th. Veterans Council is also looking for any volunteers for the event. Can reach out to Dawn Sheppas or Gary down at the, if you'd like to, to help. And we also have Town of Norton Public Auction, Wednesday, June 28th at 11:00 AM, to be held at the Norton Public Library, 68 East Main Street. These are parcels that were taken back text titled, ready? Do I have to read all these?
You should have said that just.
Well, just for the audience.
That'll be located on the website, right?
This is available at the town hall and on the website at the.
Okay. Great, thank you. Do we have any other announcements, please, you have something?
Oh, yes. I also want to announce that there'll be flyers coming out soon, but June 11th, from 11:00 to 2:30 PM at Everly Park, there'll be a pride celebration in recognition of Pride Month. There'll be swimming, food trucks, fire and police, touch a truck, crafts, face painting, tattoos, massages, games. Norton Public Library will be there, tumble house, flaky crusts, pride cookies, karaoke, and more. So feel free to join us, but there'll be flyers coming out soon as well.
What time do these?
11:00 to 2:30.
Sounds great.
We also have the Memorial Day Parade Monday, 10 o'clock starting at the.
Yep. Yeah, who's gonna be there, I'll be there. All right, excellent. So bring your walking shoes. It's 85 degrees, you know, make sure you're prepared. Drink a lot of water.
Yeah, we didn't do that last year.
Yeah, we, yeah, we ran into a little trouble last year. Mike, do you have something? Oh, yeah, sorry.
I'm just checking to see what the weather's gonna be.
Starts at the L?
Starts at the L, yeah. To Pine Street and back to, yeah. So I don't have it with me, but it's, June 26th is gonna be, there's a fundraiser for the senior center. It'll be at Goat City, and you have to get a coupon from the senior center to bring it in there. 20% of your order is gonna go towards the senior center, so I will announce that at the next meeting, too, but definitely stop by and check it out.
June 26th, you said?
June 26th, yes.
Awesome.
But you need a ticket, so you gotta get one for the senior center.
All right. And I don't think I have anything, does anybody else have anything else?
Look, I do have one more. Goat City has reminded me, there's another Goat City fundraiser, I believe. This week for track.
I did see one.
Track?
There's, there's a few of them.
Yeah, for track and field, 20 cent donated, presented tickets during the visit. I can post it on at least my, my page. If anyone wants to print it out, you can just print it out and bring it with you. But May 29th for NS Norton's, NSTF, NS Track and Field, it's, it's the high school track and field boosters.
Cool, what was the date for that one?
Uh, 29th.
May 29th.
May 29th.
Cool.
We also have, oh, it's June 13th, the, the new multi-use field is going to be named Veterans Memorial Field, right? That ceremony, I'm not sure what time that starts.
Oh, it's right here. Right here, yeah, oh, that's, that's, sorry.
It's at 4:00 PM.
Do you have these out?
This is the tent dedication.
This is, you know what they, you know, take one of these.
It's two.
Oh, it's different.
Yeah, there's two, there's one on 12th, one on 13th.
All right.
And then we're throwing dates out, and I'm gonna throw out the 17th is Norton First and 10 Football Boosters is doing a cornhole tournament at the VFW.
What day is that?
It's a Saturday, June 17th.
Okay. Do we have like one place that we put all these announcements on, online or anything like that?
That's a great question.
Put it on the website?
Should be on the.
It's on the website, but, but not like when you do all the boosters and stuff like that, it doesn't.
It's all just on the booster?
Yeah, but we should, it would be good for us to get it up there.
Yeah.
Okay, now let's list off birthdays.
All right, we can, we can talk about that, maybe, maybe we can find like a bulletin board or something, or something like that to put it up.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, because that was a lot of announcements. And.
Busy spring.
And I actually have one more, and I don't have any material for it, but they are doing the, after the Memorial Day Parade, they are dedicating the, and opening the garage museum, I think.
That's right.
The Historical Society, so, so if you can make that, that would be awesome, too.
I was supposed to mention that.
Yeah. All right, cool. So lots of go, lots of stuff going around, going on in town, so that's great. All right, moving on to new business, we have a couple of proclamations, we'll start with the fire proclamation.
What are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Chief Simmons wasn't able to make it tonight, so I'm covering for him. So I'm not sure if you want to do the proclamation first, and then we can just score a few things that we're doing as far as the EMS division? Or I can do that first, you can do it afterwards, it's up to you.
Sounds good, yeah, we should read the proclamation. Go ahead, Alec. Sorry, Alec. This is what my first night is like, it's like, too, I don't, yeah.
Okay, so the EMS Week proclamation. To designate the week of May 21st to 27th, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week, whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Whereas Emergency Medical Services have grown to fill a gap by providing meaningful, out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatches, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. Whereas the number, the members of Emergency Medical Services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, Norton Select Board, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st to 27th, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week, with the theme EMS, Where Emergency Care Begins. I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
So the EMS system at the Norton Fire Department is going really well. I think we have the best system in the United States. One of the changes we had this year is with myself moving up to Deputy Chief, Captain Eric Tyner's taking over my role as EMS Director. I was EMS Director since 1994. He's been my assistant for the last five to six years, done a great job. He's definitely gonna keep it going, you know, with new ideas and, and things like that. But, you know, it, it takes, the EMS system takes a bunch of, you know, from dispatchers to police officers, to firefighters, to administrators, and all the way, you know, up to the physicians, the hospitals, and things like that. We also can't do it without the Select Board and the Town Manager approving, you know, things that we want to do, and like I said, where I think we're on the cutting edge, I, I don't think there's anybody that could match our service to anybody else. Everything that comes up new, we're right on it, and we're usually the first one to do it. Like I said, I wanted to introduce Captain Tyner, because he has our full support, and he's gonna do a great job continuing into the, the next, at least the next 10, 20 years. Hopefully. We want to thank you for your support for that, because again, you know, it's, it's such a big, there's so many people that are involved with the EMS system, and, you know, with us being able to come up with, you know, new ideas, new equipment, it's not cheap, obviously, and I, I don't think there's anything that we ever want to do that's been denied as far as that goes, so that's, that's a big part, so you're a big part of it, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy.
I think I mentioned it last year, and I'll mention it again, you know, my family has had occasion to use the EMS services in town, and every experience we've had has been extremely positive. The professionals are very, very kind and, and fast, and, you know, we, we really appreciate you guys very much, just on a personal level, but also as a board, so.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Appreciate you guys very much.
Yeah, I can say, I think I, I was trying to count in my head, I think we've used you six times in the last 21 years. And every time it was like top-notch, and I just, I really appreciate what you guys do, so thank you. That's a good one.
All right, I just want to say, you know, you've got big shoes to fill. He's incredible, and to his point of, I don't think he's exaggerating when he says we're the best in the country.
We have an exceptional reputation among the local hospitals and people that we deal with. They talk about, when we review what calls people do, and they always say, this is an issue some people have, and not Norton, everybody else needs to worry about it, so, and that's, and that's what he did to bring this up.
That's great.
We've had doctors actually say that we don't even really know, thank goodness this happened in Norton, and that's the, you know, support we're getting from them, too, which is, which is very good.
I'd like to echo Megan, Kevin, we, in my personal family, we have a lot of medical issues, and you guys have been out dozens of times, I'm sure, over the past 15 years we've been here, and, and definitely saved a lot of lives at least two of my family members. And, and again, if we were in a different town, I don't think that would have happened, so, yeah, we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Well, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
And then we have, next up, we have the presentation of the pride proclamation. Alec, you want to read that one as well?
Yep. This is the Town of Norton proclamation, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ plus Pride Month, June 2023. Whereas the Town of Norton is a welcoming community and an exceptional place to live, learn, work, play, and raise a family. Whereas Norton recognizes, recognizes the importance of equality and freedom. Whereas the nation was founded upon and is guided by a set of principles that includes that every person has been created equally, that each has rights to their life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, and that each shall be accorded the full recognition and protection of law. Whereas the Town of Norton, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ community are a vital part of all fields and professions and contribute to a stronger community. Whereas the Town of Norton is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all its citizens and preventing discrimination and bullying based on sexual orientation and gender identity. Whereas Norton is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents, all of which contribute to a vibrant character of our town. Whereas the Centers for Disease Control recognizes that the LGBTQ teens are at higher risk to be the victims of violence and have increased suicide rates. Whereas it is imperative that young people in the community, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board, and on behalf of the Town of Norton, hereby proclaim and recognize June 2023 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer LGBTQ Pride Month in the Town of Norton, and we recognize the resilience and determination of the many individuals who are fighting to live freely and authentically. In doing so, they are opening hearts and minds and laying the foundation for a more just and equitable town, Town of Norton Select Board.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Nick.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Can we vote on the proclamations?
You just, no.
Yeah, we just signed them.
Okay, all right, great. All right. Next up is the declaration of a Ford truck and a Ford, two Ford trucks, and a surplus.
Yeah, these are two pretty old vehicles, a 1999 and a 2001, and we'll put them on GovDeals on Minnesota Bid and auction those off.
All right, any discussion? Okay.
I'll make a motion to vote to declare the Fire Department's 1999 Ford F-450. Do I need to read the bin? Very good. And 20, 2001 Ford F-350, S surplus.
I'll second it.
All right, hearing a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. And then next up on the agenda, we had, I think, so I'll, I'll kind of expand on this a little bit. I think the, we had a request from a citizen to, to grant, for the Select Board to grant permission to put the pride signs, the small, the small signs on the town comment for the month of June. We, the, I think there was a question just about, you know, who has the explicit, you know, decision-making power to decide, you know, decide what goes on the comment and what doesn't. So, so I asked for it to be put on the agenda just so we could, as a Select Board, just, you know, make the, make the vote either, you know, to approve them or not approve them, so.
And I did tell her the same as we did last year, I assumed everyone could be all set with that.
Yeah.
Yeah. The final question is, I think in the request, it was two, which would be the same as last year, I was wondering if we could just say we'd be okay with more than that, like up to four? If you need to, because it seems like two would be very few in that space. I think she was just trying to keep it the same, but, yeah.
So do we want to specifically put a number in there, say four?
I would say up to four.
Up to four?
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion on that? Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve four signs on the, up to four signs on the town, pride signs on the town comment for the month of June.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Any opposed? All right, none opposed?
Last year I was going to my conference at UMass, and I think it was Belcher Town I went through, and someone had one of the signs on their front yard, Belcher Town.
Is this your daughter?
One of the Norton, I don't, I don't know if someone moved there from Norton, but they had it on their front yard.
That's funny. Yes, these are, these signs were designed by, by my daughter when she was in middle, in the middle school.
Isn't that cool?
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah.
Interestingly enough, so my work marches in the local parades, and they make T-shirts every year, it's actually the same background, just not the N, obviously, but the same background as the, those signs.
She did some rights, some copyrights.
Yeah, if you look really closely at the, in the bottom right corner, you can see the little signatures down there, it doesn't show up great on there, but it's, it's pretty cool. So it is really cool, just on a personal note, to like drive around town and see, you know, see all these signs everywhere, I mean, or Belcher Town, wherever you happen to be.
I work out by Belcher Town, so just tell me, it's out there.
So, all right, so that's great. Yeah, this is actually a quick one as well, I, I just wanted to just reiterate what we're doing currently as far as the agenda, you know, getting items on the agenda. I'm not really looking to make any, any big changes to the process. I think for now, we, we want to try to have topics for Thursday's meeting by the previous Friday. So that gives, you know, gives us time to put them on a draft agenda, to review them, and then get them out to all of you on Monday, so for the, to the review of the draft agenda, and then finalize it on Tuesday. I think the goal, the general goal is we don't want to have to be putting out revised agendas, if at all possible. I'm sure there's gonna be situations where we have to, but, you know, the overall goal is we want to have an agenda set on Tuesday, and then we don't have to revise it.
And remember, they close at, what, 12:30 on Fridays?
Right.
So that was something I always forgot, I guess.
Well, we had meetings on Wednesday before, so it had to go, we had to.
Right, but it still is not something that you're always thinking about, so.
And then.
Can I add?
Yeah.
My only concern is getting, the packet today wasn't that big, but getting the materials, some, some nights it's 250 pages, so if we could, if it's gonna be a heavy agenda like that, maybe we could try to have it finalized Monday night so that we can get those materials a little more in advance.
Yeah, and, and that's actually a good point, and that, that kind of brings up something I wanted to, to talk about here, too, as well, which is, you know, we obviously want to be efficient, and we want to go through, through things as quickly as possible, but I think it's important for us to realize that just because it's on an agenda does not mean that we have to vote on it. Okay, so if something comes up where it's, you know, a 50-page document, even if we get it on Monday, you know, we might not have a chance to review it by Thursday, so I just want to set the expectation that like sometimes we're gonna push things off to the next meeting because we didn't have time. And that's okay, we don't have to, you know, if it's, if it's an urgent matter, it's an urgent matter, that's different, but if it's something that needs to be reviewed, I don't want, I don't want us feeling like, you know, oh, I have to have this 50-page document read in two days, and, and then also maybe, you know, formulate an opinion on it, provide revisions to it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, so, yeah, so just, you know, set that expectation, we don't always have to vote on something if it's on the agenda.
And can I just add, so sometimes, too, when, like, again, if someone's going for some kind of license or something like that, they might have to include all their 1099s and their tax stuff and their bank statements, so sometimes it, it seems like it's, it's a lot, and when you actually drill down. So sometimes it seems like it's, it's a lot, and when you actually drill down, you don't really need to go through the bank statements unless you want to, but.
Yeah.
So anyway, so I'm just throwing that out there. Sometimes it seems overwhelming and it's not.
Yeah, there was one, if you, yeah, there was one, it was a couple months back where there was, it was like 300 pages. And I came in and I actually quizzed you guys because there was two pages in there that didn't belong, and nobody noticed it except for me. So, you know, and it was stuff just like that, that you didn't really have to read through all that stuff in depth, but.
Do you want us to look at, when it comes to something like that, just the real apartment stuff, and then we'll keep the other stuff in a folder and we'll have it here if anyone wants to look at? The bank statements.
Probably not a bad idea.
Things like the bank statements, I mean, like with the liquor license thing I had last
time, things like the layout and stuff, I like in a packet. Yeah, that's important, but yeah.
For me, just because I'm, I'm kind of new, I like to see all the, all the nitty-gritty stuff behind it.
Yeah.
If it's at least in a SharePoint that I can access, that that's fine. Like, should I put it in SharePoint?
Or Dropbox.
Right, Dropbox.
Yeah. Yeah, so if that doesn't create too much work, we could do, maybe do two packets, like one packet with the pertinent information and another packet with the supplemental information?
That might help.
That would save on coffee costs.
And that's okay by the OML and all that, right?
Slide around a little bit.
Anything crazy? Fair?
More heated.
Yeah. I think that would be awesome if we could do that. Yep. And just as an example, like, so we had, when I got the original agenda for this meeting, it had all five of the new policies we're looking at on the agenda, right? And I'm like, we're not reviewing five policies in one meeting, right? Because first of all, we'll be here forever. And second of all, you know, we're not going to have time to really dig into the policies enough because we're going to feel rushed. So that's why for this meeting, it's only the Workplace Violence Policy, because, you know, again, I don't want to try to, I don't want to not give everything the due time it needs just because we feel like we need to, we need to rush.
Rush.
Yeah.
Priority. This one's a priority.
Yeah, and this one felt, it felt like the highest priority, so. All right. Great. Very good. And then, all right, so this is not my finest work, so please hold your criticisms. I just threw together some ideas on a policy, policy? All right? So, so how are we, we talked about this a couple weeks ago, about how, you know, when we have a new policy, you know, do we just have some general guidelines? That's really what this is? You know, should we be reaching out to other, other boards or other board chairs to get opinions? You know, where's, where's this policy coming from? Is this a new policy? Is it a revised policy? You know, what resources were used in creating the policy? And just kind of lay out a process for how we're going to, you know, as we have these policies come up, you know, how we're going to handle them. So I'll just give this out to you guys, and you can review it. It, we don't have to approve it or do anything with it. It's just my thoughts really on paper, and then we can, we can talk about it, you know, further at a later date, but I'll pass this down. Like I said, it's not my finest work. It's really just kind of a dump from my brain on some ideas. But it, I think it would be good to just have like these guidelines because, you know, occasionally if we do come up with a new policy, you know, it's important, you know, what the source material is. It's important, you know, if it came from Town Council, as Town Council's another thing we should put on there, as Town Council reviewed it and approved it, just have, you know, sort of a general process. One of the things I really like about how the school committee does their new policies is they have a first reading. So they present it to the board, and I believe they're not allowed to vote on it after the first reading. But I would like to propose, and you guys have no decisions tonight or anything, but I would love to propose something where we have a first policy reading, and we are not allowed to vote on it on the first night. So we just say, the first reading is just everybody's chance. We get it out in the public. Everybody has a chance to review it, right? And then, yes, after that first reading, at the second meeting or whatever, we can vote on it. But at that first meeting, it's, we shouldn't be voting on anything unless we've had a chance to really look at it. I don't know if it's necessary to go that far, but just an idea that I had.
Yeah. Everyone's in agreement to vote, I don't see why we can't.
Yeah, yeah. So maybe more of a guideline, just say like, you know, at that first reading, you know, if it's really simple and easy, we can do it. But, you know, again, I'm just trying to take some of the urgency, like the urgency out of things. I mean, I know things can be urgent, but, you know, I just want to be a little bit more thoughtful and deliberate about how we're, how we're doing things like policies, and I think we're going to have more policies to review. So, go ahead, yeah.
Like, when I was on the school committee, I know we would have a first reading, so that would just get it out there, and then we could email it to all the department heads and say, we just had a first reading of this policy. And then that would give them an opportunity to have some input. So at the second reading, you'd go over any input that you had, and then you'd vote it. The third, the third reading of it. So we always had a third reading of our policies. So that's strictly something, just an idea.
I think that's a, I think it's a good idea, too.
For you, Jack, but Mr. Unis, is there a list of the existing policies that you have today? Just so we have an idea of, if there's any overlap? There aren't any.
No, there's a, there's a decrepit.
Is this the infamous Blue Book?
The Blue Book, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
As I said, just so we can see if there's any overlap or if there's conflicting things in the documents, that would be helpful, I think.
So I think part of the process, again, I think part of the process would be, what do we have currently? Do we have a, I doubt there's a social media policy in the decrepit Blue Book. But, you know, do we have a conduct policy or something like that? I mean, there's one already existing. You know, whoever is revising it or putting a proposal together should look at that and see if it needs to be totally tossed out, or maybe we can revise it and go from there. So.
Yeah.
That should be part of the process. But.
There's a copy of that.
Yeah. Okay.
There you go.
Do you have regular training for at least the employees on the policy? These are all mostly employment policies, right?
So who, when an employee is hired?
They sign off the date right away?
So maybe it would be good eventually to go through them and update.
Yeah, yeah. And for right now, we're just, I think we're just going to focus on those four or five ones that we've already kind of introduced, and we'll go through those.
Yeah.
And we'll, you know, we'll try to just sort of methodically go through them, and then over time, we'll have a new decrepit Blue Book.
Yeah.
That we can use.
Well, once we get through the four, maybe we can just add one to each agenda if it's, unless it's a, you know, larger agenda.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's a great idea.
I live in a world with his thousands of policies, so it's like custom.
So I can go through the Blue Book and bring one policy every week, like.
Oh, that would be.
Which ones you want to update?
Employees should not park their horses in front.
Yeah.
We can update.
And you can say that one's got to go.
Yeah, we can update them so they're current, right?
See, that's one, that's one that we would vote on that night, I'm sure. So the policy on policy.
Policy on policy. So just, again, just review that. We can talk about it again. I honestly just threw some notes down, and we've already had some good ideas here, so if you want to shoot some ideas over, and then we can revise it and then vote on it. So, all right?
Yep.
Good deal. All right. Next up is the discussion and/or vote on the termination of the Serpide alternate position. So just some background on this. Mike, if you, if you want me to do it, I'll cover the background. We approved this alternate position last year, and then after we had approved the position, one of the Select Board members at the time reached out to Serpide to find out if any other towns had alternates, and if an alternate was, was something that was required or needed. And the feedback was that it really wasn't something that other towns had or wasn't, wasn't really needed. So, so we talked about at the time about allowing the appointment to go for the full year, excuse me, that we appointed last year, and then at the end of that year, we would, we would terminate it. So, so just bringing that up for termination. What I wasn't able to ask you before the meeting was, Mike, was do we have, do we know the date that it was that the current Serpide alternate was voted in?
It was either at the end of May or early June.
It was early June.
I think it was mid-June, or eleventh, maybe, or something like that.
Okay. So what we could do is just say.
Just say as effective as whenever we appoint.
As the end of, yeah.
Okay. So we'll do that. So effective, one year from the date of appointment, we'll, we'll terminate the Serpide alternate position. So who wants to make a motion on it?
I'll make a motion to terminate the alternate Serpide position one year from the date of which my appointment, yeah.
Second.
Okay. Hearing a motion in a second. All, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All right. We have no, no opposition, so that passes unanimously. And then, Mike, I'll turn this over to you.
So you voted in exec session to approve the Norton Firefighters Local 2678 International Association of Firefighters contract, and now I'm just asking you to ratify that vote by taking it in open session.
Okay.
I'm motion to approve the Norton Firefighters Local 2678 IAFF contract.
Second.
Okay. Hearing a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Passes unanimously. Mike, do you have any other business not participated in the last 48 hours?
No.
Anyone else have anything? All right. So, so speaking of policies, so we provided a workplace violence prevention policy. And. So Mike, if you don't mind, can you give us just a little background on where the policy came from?
So this policy was developed by Colton and Paige. I know Jennifer reached out and owned the policy and then adapted it for Norton.
Okay. And Denise, I know you had pointed out some, you had redlined it a little bit, so do you want to kind of talk us through?
Sure. I just.
Some of the suggestions?
Sure. I just added in the purpose. I add to the list of folks that were responsible for, or who were in the scope of this, appointed officials, and the application, it applies to the employees. So I had a question that this only applies to employees, and I'm assuming it does, since this is a workplace violence thing, I just wanted to just confirm that, right? And then I just, a lot of it was just clean up, like grammatical stuff, making it clear what the defined terms were. I added in, I numbered it, so you can refer to numbers if you needed to. And then I added in section five, which is the procedure for reporting threats. I just added in, assessed by the seriousness of the incident, and I added in, or the frequency of the incidents, the town department, town manager, sorry, the town manager may assemble a management response team, et cetera, et cetera. And then I just added at the end, nothing in this policy is intended to conflict with existing laws that may also cover the same areas. That's pretty much about it. Minus.
So when we say employees, we're talking just, this applies to just employees?
I like the changes. I, I'm motion to approve with the changes. As right side.
Second.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
First policy's done.
Congratulations.
One hour, 700 to go.
First policy's done.
Can we follow the procedure?
No, we didn't really, but that policy hasn't been adopted yet, so.
We'll save that one for last.
All right. So Town Manager's report.
Just wanted to remind you that Habitat for Humanity is having their groundbreaking June 1st at 16 Ridge Road, so they want to know if someone from the board could be there to say a few words. You'll be there, great.
It's also graduation day, just in fact.
Yeah. I will be there as well?
Yeah.
Is that 1:00?
Yeah, there's something else in the morning, but that's different.
I do have that as well.
Yeah, I'm going to go with that one.
Yeah. Oh, excellent. Go ahead.
All right. And just a warning, be prepared, full-depth reconstruction of East Main Street from the hump to 495 begins Tuesday. It will be at least four weeks, and they're going to rip everything out. They're going right down, bringing in new soil, full-depth reconstruction. So.
It's going to go down to one lane, I assume.
They're going to keep one lane open all the way, but it's going to be dirt, so.
It's still going to be better than what it is now.
When we walked it, they, they asked me if anyone was complaining. I said, are you kidding me? The fighter hump is killing their trucks, and I'm trying to get my car to 300,000 miles, and it really hurts my chances.
Can you explain where the hump is?
The hump is right by the old Jack Conway.
Or old station?
Right, right. It's where the bike trail's going to go across, 123. Alec knows, he's an old time humpist.
That's been referred to as the hump for my whole life.
Does Steve not know where Block Shop Curb is either?
No.
No, where's that?
Of course I do. We're there. You just, I want to see if you know.
So people should be, people should be prepared on South Washington Street, Plain Street, you know, Newland and Neeland and.
So what kind of alerts have we?
Renee's not going to see as much as, you know, they'll be going down Plain, right? Is that where the detour is going to be?
They're not detouring. They're going to keep one lane open. They're not shutting them down.
But people will try to find.
Birdchill and.
People should not go. Do they have that traffic management plan?
Yeah.
And what kind of alerts are going out to?
So we've put everything on the website and on the sign, and tomorrow night.
I'll get the message board.
The alerts kind of go out and warn people.
There's a big message board in front of Wheaton, too.
Because I was thinking with, obviously, the LG is still in session, which will be affected, and also Birdchill, which Norton, baseball's going on, so.
I did send the notice to the school department a while back, so.
Maybe also the Norton baseball, I'm just thinking, I don't know, but, I mean, that's.
And then, once this is done, is it done?
Yeah.
Oh, that's true. So during the day, that's a good point.
During the walk last Friday, another good point was that they don't think they're going to need to extend the easements. They believe they're going to be done in 2024, so.
Oh, that's great.
So they'll do this, the sidewalks and that, the roadwork, the traffic signals, and then moving the seating. That'll be taken in the spring to give that, to finish it up. It'll be all done in 2024.
Mr. Chair, through you, when the traffic lights will be put in? Or is that just the road now, and then we'll find out?
Probably after.
But I'm going to get asked that question 100 times. I just wanted to make sure. But I'm going to get to ask that question 100 times, I just wanted to make sure.
Verizon's still working around there, but they have gotten that all out, yeah. That was the big hole up there. So, it'll be nice someday.
They have been, Verizon's been on it.
Oh, yeah, they've been out there constantly lately.
Somebody, you know, kicked them. No, they were holding it up.
State reps. I just want to talk about Everett Leonard Park. Melissa's done a great job getting that ready. She actually had the sheriff's department out there today painting, the one at like the fire department, they came out earlier in the month. So, we had a phone that should be by the pool, an emergency phone, pick it up, and it was never hooked up, so the fire department ran a phone line to the pole by the pool, and we'll get that phone out there, as I always like. She had the video monitoring company out there to do some work on the six cameras to get, make sure they're all functioning. The health agent inspected the AED machine, looks good now, may need a new one next year. And she secured a new desk for the office. So, if anyone wants to make contributions to the Recreation Commission, she, she has a list, she's looking for some more anaerobic chairs.
Oh, yeah, can we put that up somewhere? I bet you we could probably get people up.
I will.
Yeah.
She's looking, let's see, propane tanks, two, a lifesaving ring, a lifeguard chair, the anaerobic chair, lounge chair. So, I've got the prices and everything. I'll, I'll make sure she puts it up on the recreation site. Two grills, mulch, the exterior paint that she bought for the prisoners from Crystal County. Actually, Franklin Sports reached out, and that was, she was able to get walls for $5 apiece, basketballs, footballs, soccer balls.
That's great.
That was great, she was able to get quite a few. So, I'll, I'll make sure she gets this up, more padding for the basketball hoops is another thing.
Yeah, when I'm dunking, that's, that's a real problem.
I actually may have an extra grill, so, yeah, I'll watch, I can make sure it's still nice. It's in good shape.
Awesome. All right, well, great job, Melissa.
Yeah.
Good stuff. Yes, I have a quick announcement, also, I don't want to step on your toes, Mike, but Steve mentioned that there is another event on June 1st.
I didn't know if it was public.
So, this is a, oh, yeah. Well.
I don't know if it's public.
All right, well, I'm going to announce it, I'm going to announce it, anyway. The sous chef at the TPC of Austin, her name is Beth Stentiford, she is being, she was awarded the A. James Clark Award, which is the TPC Network Employee of the Year for the entire country.
Wow.
So, so she is being honored on June 1st, so, yeah, I'm not sure, I don't think it's a public event, but did want to give her a shout out, anyway, because that's pretty cool. So, that's all I got. Mike, you got anything else?
Nope.
All right. Select boards' report and mail.
I think we'll go through.
This is my favorite part of the meeting, by the way, because everybody's like, what are we supposed to do here? Does anybody have any mail they'd like to share?
Because we do turn the announcements sometimes.
Yeah, again, it goes back to the old blue book thing that we wanted to destroy, like.
We read these two, right, track in the field, right?